So it's six o'clock. And David, do we have anyone signed in for any visitor comments?
Nobody has signed in for visitor comments, but I'm just going to go.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first thing we need to approve, I would like a motion to approve the minutes from April 6th, April 13th, April 15th, and April 22nd.
You want to do them separately, right?
Yes.
Okay. I move to approve the minutes from April 6th.
You have a second? Any discussion on the minutes from April 6th? All those in favor?
Hi.
I'm sorry, who's second you got?
Marie. Okay, minutes from, uh, April 13th? You have a motion?
I move to accept the minutes from April 13th.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
And I'm abstaining, David.
And I am abstaining, yeah.
Who is, uh, Marie and Welles?
Mike.
I am. Okay, meeting minutes from, uh, April 15th.
I move to approve the minutes from April 15th.
You have a second? Any discussion?
Who's second?
Marie, did you second? Oh, you have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Hi.
I'm abstaining.
I'm abstaining as well.
And I'll move to...
The 22nd?
Did we do that already?
No, April 22nd.
Okay, I'll move to approve the minutes from April 22nd.
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
I have one comment on this one. Very, very nice notes. I actually was able to go back and remember, you know, in each category what we talked about, so thank you all.
Phew. Guess we have new minutes taken up. Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay. So those are the minutes. Okay, the next thing is a grade three field trip to Connecticut Science Center. You have a motion for this trip?
Put it in there.
Uh, I don't know if it made it into your packets or not. Because it was in my notebook and it's not there tonight, so I don't know if Debbie want to speak to the, um, trip. I did review it and would recommend approval, but...
Um, the third grade team is looking at something a little different, um, to go along with their science curriculum, and they noticed some wonderful offerings at the Connecticut Science Center. So they asked my thoughts on it, and I thought it sounded great. Um, they're going to be doing things like, um, earth science, human body, environmental habitats, which goes along with what they do in third grade. Uh, the only issue we've run into is that our nurses are not licensed in the state of Connecticut, so, um, parents, the two parents that have agreed to go with their children on the field trip, to make up for that, because we can't have our nurses practicing in Connecticut. It's not allowed there.
Okay, and so what is the, usually, you know, on that, it's, when is the trip? The cost of the trip? Uh, are there any donations for the trip?
Um, PTO will be taking care of the busing, and the busing is $640, I believe. And the student cost is $10 per student to go there.
Okay, and does it seem like, how many... When is it?
It is, um, June 10th.
And what percentage of the students are going?
They'll all go.
Even though it's a $10 cost?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, because we, we definitely look at a percentage to make sure that the...
And they're all planning on going. We've never had an issue with any students not going. If they couldn't afford it, we make sure they could.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I missed the location. Local radio?
Connecticut Science Center.
Science, okay.
In Hartford.
Thank you.
What about East Meadows class that went there? Those there?
Fifth grade goes as well. Yeah, they're going to share.
So can I have a motion for that, uh, grade three field trip?
I would make a motion to approve the grade three field trip to Connecticut Science Center.
You have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
That's over in Kansas.
So West Street School surplus material?
Um, that should be in your packet.
You have a motion for that?
So I'm...
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on this surplus material from West Street School?
God bless you.
Bless you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Hi.
Okay, moving on to superintendent's report. Update on...
I had a question on that one, because I don't know, it's not a discussion or anything. What is a tornado floor buffer?
It's a giant disc, and you've got to have a good grip on these kinds of floor buffers. I've tried in my day. It's not, it's not easy to control them.
Especially with the wind, I think.
Yeah. Sort of sound like that, actually, to be honest with you. But they do, you know, sort of buff up a floor after you wax it, so... It's amazing the things I know. Okay, on to strategic planning. I tried to, um, sort of capture on the first page of this, um, the discussion from the last meeting. Realized I left off the school nurse leader and district administration, so I would add that as a position as well. So that puts us up to 38 people on the task force. I wouldn't go much higher than that, because then it does get a little unwieldy, so... Tried to do similarly to school, uh, school councils, you know, teachers having the same ratio as, uh, parents and so on and so forth, and plus the extra folks that we talked about. And somebody emailed me and said, um, suggested the town library have some sort of representation on it as well, so I did add that to the time group. And then behind it are just some samples of what I would send out to, whether I'm inviting or, you know, making an announcement for people to send in letters, so...
Is there an expectation set for this? Based on your experience, how many times do they get to meet? 10, 20, 5?
Uh, let's see. On average, I've done the work in about four to six meetings.
I'm asking because when we did the master plan, the first few meetings, everybody was there, then started doing the line.
Yeah, yeah. I think we usually do it in about four to six meetings.
Cool, thank you.
So, um, Dr. Who, uh, in your times doing this, do you normally have a charter in place at first? You know, that everyone, and then everyone's aware of the goals of the meeting and...
Yeah, that's how I usually start the process, is to talk about what we're about and what the process looks like, so that people know.
And, um, you know, part of this, I'm thinking, is, you know, we want to make sure that, I guess, how do we get input from the community for this task force? Or are we looking for input from the community for this task force of, you know, how they vision our school district or anything like that?
You can do something similar to like the budget. Have a public hearing, once you have the draft in place, um, you know, done that for emergency operations plans and a few other things, is that, you know, we then, once the task force has finished its work, then it would begin, you know, it would have a public hearing on, on plan, present the plan, take feedback, comments, and then if there's any, um, you know, things that the task force wants to commit, consider before the school committee does a final vote, they would then take those comments under advisement and go from there. So there's no real action that you need to take on this, I just wanted to kind of give you, other than, you know, I was hopeful that I captured, um, you know, what you were looking for in terms of the composition of the group.
So what do you need from us in terms of timeframe, uh, in terms of, you know...
Well, assuming that by consensus, we're all good with the composition of the committee, then tomorrow I will begin the process of making public invitations, announcements, et cetera, ask people to get back to us by the 22nd, so that if there are, say, for example, from parents, there are more letters than there are slots, you could certainly consider that at your June 4th meeting, and probably, uh, not June 4th, June 8th meeting. And then, uh, you know, at the June 8th meeting, sort of, you know, appoint...
Okay. Okay. Does anyone have any questions on that, Dr. Who?
I have a question. For the teachers' secretaries, the letter that goes out to the school community, there's a request to send a letter of interest in hard copy. Is that the protocol?
Only because I lose things in email.
Oh, yeah.
Because my email just gets exponential, so I'm fearful that something's going to get lost in the shuffle. I'd rather just have people do a hard copy, and that way, somebody else collects them, and I know that they've been safely collected, and I haven't missed somebody by accident, so it's just cool.
Okay, moving on to your next item.
School safety, task force.
Yep, I did, um, meet during the April break with both, uh, the police chief and the fire chief to talk about the district's emergency operations plan, and, uh, based on, again, my knowledge of, of this particular work, um, there are some things that need to be done to strengthen the current plan that's in place for the district. So, um, they seem to be very receptive to doing, doing that kind of work, so again, we would try to put some sort of task force together that would involve, you know, administration, teachers, parents, fire, police, highway, town administrator, all of those people who might be in the mix should something, God forbid, happen that would require a coordinated incident command center to have to be set up. So, um, I happen to live around the corner from the deputy chief of operations for the University of Massachusetts Police Department, who walked Belcher Town through this process while I've reached out to him. He's willing to come to Granby to help us do that here as well. Um, and, uh, so he'll work with us, so I'm just trying to get everybody together on the same page around this, so that we can get a good comprehensive emergency operations plan that hopefully we never have to use, but nonetheless, it'll be in place. And then there would be training for administration and staff around all of that. Would include aspects around what to do with certain kinds of emergencies. There would be sort of a hazard analysis that the group would do, what are particular hazards that might be germane to Granby that we need to be thinking about across several domains, um, you know, things about how do we reunify parents with children in the event of an emergency, and children have been either evacuated within district, within town, or even possibly out of town, making sure we have good solid anchor agreements with neighboring districts that in the event of an evacuation that takes kids out of town, you know, that we know where we're supposed to be going and how we would set up that whole parental reunification, um, piece. So, um, those are some things that, you know, other people who unfortunately have gone through these kinds of incidents have learned from not having things ready, so, you know, like I say, both chiefs were very interested and pleased to be able to, um, sit down and be able to be a part of this and think about it, so...
Just a follow-up question on that, Dr. Who, and I don't know if this plays into it or not, but I know last summer, you know, I believe our staff was getting trained, or principals were getting trained, that, you know, instead of duck and hide, it's really to get out of the building, or, um, so where are we in the process, and this might be for the principals, of have the children been educated, or the students been educated in the schools of this new process?
Right. The methodology is called A L S. It is alert, lock down, inform, counter, and evacuate. There is some controversy around the counter piece of it, because the counter piece of it trains kids to take things into their own hands and to go back at, you know, an active shooter. And there's a lot of controversy around that, that I think we really need to think about in terms of all of that kind of stuff. But, um, there is a body of research that says that tucking yourself away in the corner may not always be the best idea, but you have to really get all of those pieces together, and that would be part of what we would look at in this overall comprehensive plan, you know, as well.
So what are we telling our students today? Because our understanding was that they were getting trained on A L S then, so are they not?
The way the current emergency operations plan is written, it is written as a pure lockdown. So again, that's one of the things that this group needs to address, is do we go towards an A L S model? How do we implement that? How do we train staff and students and all of that business?
So I would probably follow up, I think, I would ask you to follow up with the principals, because it seems that, you know, between our resource officer and our principals and leadership, um, that's what we're going towards? Uh, and the school committee was well informed of that?
Mm-hmm.
And there was some training, so I would have thought that that training had happened, and so we're using a different model now? The old model that has been in place?
Well, let's say that, let's put it this way, your current emergency operations plan does not fully address all of the elements of A L S, so...
Last year, we did a presentation from Officer White, and I think it was based on that presentation in the aftermath, that we thought we were going in that direction of implementing A L S.
Well, the training was, was going to be starting and then...
I thought they were having meetings, that they were...
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm, that's what I'm watching about.
So the initial training of the staff took place, it's not really training, it's more informational, and looking at scenarios, and looking at, you know, looking at options instead of just having the one option. We even, on Parents Night in September, we talked to the parents about how this might look different, but Dr. Who was absolutely right, like it was never really written into any of the definitive policies and formats that, that currently are. So if someone were not, someone new to the district, and they didn't know anything about kind of what we've done, that's all that's in place, and that, and that's an important piece to move, or like, which is what you're...
So I would ask as to you that you follow up where this fell through the cracks, because we were told that there was meetings, there was training...
Right.
And everything else.
And I know that's all happened, but again, it's not codified currently in your emergency operations plan, so again, if that's the direction the district is headed, we need to get the protocols in place in writing so that everybody knows what the protocol is.
Well, that's the, uh, I guess that would be the expectations that I had, and I would say the school committee had, because that was the whole thing, was that they were reviewing all those procedures and looking at a new safety book and all that. That's needed. So, um, I'm surprised that that's not in place at this point.
I am too.
Well, if I may interject, um, we had a huge training at a regional nurse leader meeting, and we had two state troopers come out and speak for the morning, and I have their names as well. They can come out and help us with any kind of mock interventions, if you will. They also voiced their hesitation about some of the A L S program, and they're not exactly certain that it's going to work in every district. It's going to be kind of like the wellness policy, where you look at it as a district and see what fits for you, instead of it being a universal policy, because some of it, some of it makes sense in South Hadley, they're trying to get stuff started, but they've decided that some of it doesn't. So there's no real form, that's the definite form to use yet, so the troopers brought it to our attention. We talked about the medical piece, obviously, if you have a type 1 diabetic in lockdown, you know, you have to make sure there's stuff in the classroom, but the other piece of the counter, countering, the student countering, and the teacher, you know, pushing the furniture up against the door, there's still a lot of controversy about that.
So, so I totally respect that and everything, but I don't think that's what we're saying.
No.
If there was, if there was a change or a question by the administration, that's fine, but the school committee should be informed that we're going down a different route now.
It kind of feels like we lost a year, because I remember when Marie and I stepped on the school committee in May...
That's when we were hearing about it.
And we were under the impression that...
It was an ongoing.
Yes.
And that training was happening during the summer.
So we are a year later, and...
And so, you know...
I mean, I just sat down and reviewed paperwork.
Right, right, right.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm not, I don't want you to think that I'm putting blame on you, Dr. Who, or anything at all.
No, 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 absolutely not. I'm actually glad you did it.
I'm just saying that there's some holes in this that we would like filled, and so if...
Right, and both Allen Ross are in agreement that there are some holes that need to be filled. As a matter of fact, the sample I showed you the night that I interviewed with you, I sent off to them electronically so they could review it as well, you know, and see the work that I've done in that, in that regard. And like I say, Deputy Chief Seer is more than happy to, to help us out with that, and just trying to pull all the, pull all the people together.
And no drills have been done this year, this school year.
My understanding is that lockdown drills have been done, but not...
Not for A L S.
Not, and, not A L S wise.
Because you have to stay with your policy that you have in place.
Right.
I'm sorry. Because you have to stay with your policy that you have in place.
That's correct, yeah. So we have some work to do, and get it done.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, donation of equipment.
Um, we've had two recent donations that I have accepted. David, as always, seems to have be able to lift up rocks and trees and come home with truckloads of computer equipment. He has done that again. Gee, I don't know if people realize, but this district runs on about 99% donated technology. That's mighty impressive. So David picked up a recent van load of, of equipment again, and is working on trying to get some things imaged and, and ready to go, so that we can do some things with regard to that. The other donation, and I blogged about it a few weeks ago, we had two parents who donated a light aid box to, um, our A B A program, which is a box that you can program so that it has light patterns. It's really cool, I don't know if it's big, but it does math games with kids, it does social interaction stuff for kids who are on the autism spectrum or have other disabilities and have trouble attending this light box, sort of helps them navigate it also, it works really well with visually impaired children. So, um, that's another donation that we recently have been able to accept, as well as a touchscreen monitor in the A B A program too, so that the children can interact with technology. So I just wanted to give you a little update on that.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Uh, finances. And for one, thank you, David, for...
Yes, thank you, Mrs. Bartlett, and her parents facilitated the stuff for the A B A room, so I make sure she gets credit for that.
Yeah, so thank you. We definitely appreciate donations. Uh, greatly appreciated, so I didn't want to go on without saying that.
I put a revised FY 15 budget report at each of your places, because I realized that the one that you received has not been, was not the most recent update, so, um, it's a double-sided document, so... Mr. Donahue?
So, that's the good news, it's a revised report. And there's a positive bottom line of 2,004 03.
Wow.
But in essence, we're basically saying it's, it's still pretty tight.
Yep.
Two months left, so we're watching everything very closely. All POs are now going to be signed by superintendent. We're reviewing all open purchase orders presently to determine if we can possibly close some of those, and we're also looking at allocating, uh, some expenses to other appropriate funding sources, that would be the grants or revolving accounts. So it looks as though, right now, it's tight, but we're going to be okay.
Thank you. Any questions on that?
Well, just, just because I watch this, I mean, February 4th, we had an $81,000 deficit, overall deficit, and then we got to 85 at the special town meeting. So where did this 262 come from?
That's, uh...
Where did that come from?
Where are you reading 262?
Overall, showing a projected deficit.
Well, that's the old, yeah, it's 254 is basically what we're...
You guys a new one? It's 254.
Yeah, but what we're saying is, uh, we're allocating some of those tuition expenses to the special ed grant, 240 grant, which we have not done yet. So that will, in essence, give us a, a projected surplus.
So I think with the timing of the grant, and the deficit that would have happened without the grant, is that what you're talking about, Jim? That, you know, if there was no grant, because we did not talk about the grant before...
When did the grant come in?
That's, I think that's the question. Just because we did not know about the grant, uh, now we're finding out that there would have been a deficit, but thank you very much, we're pursuing the grant, it's done, but this is one of those things where we cannot really put two and two together very easily.
Jay Sullivan, who is the head of the finance unit at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, usually advises districts to sort of wait when you get close to the end of the year, and then do one big giant journal entry to charge expenses like this to grants, only because special education, again, is a moving target, where, you know, kids move in, kids move out, and whatever else. So if you set up a purchase order, say, for example, early on in the year for a student, that student moves out, then you've got to make an adjustment, you've got to make an adjustment within the grant, so it's a whole lot of extra journal entries and accounting measures that have to take place, where Jay's like, you know, kind of get the dust to all settle, and then at this time of the year, this is a good time of the year to say, okay, we can offload these particular grants, either into circuit breaker or into the special education grant. So this is the time of the year when that begins to happen.
So we've done that in the past, that we bulk it up to the end.
Right.
I think this year is an exception. You know, we had a change in superintendents, and our previous superintendent wanted to do some of this cleanup and speak on it if need be.
Mm-hmm.
So I think that's why we had that.
But I mean, that's, that's advice Jay Sullivan has been giving to the district since forever, you know, just to avoid the ins and outs that happen in, in special education, because it just is such a volatile department, so...
So is it a fair assumption to say that it never happens, that the grant doesn't cover the deficit that we're talking about?
No, because we plan for that. We plan knowing what we think the grants are going to be, and we make a plan based on what we can offload into the grants and what we actually have to pay for in the local budget. So we plan for this, but we wait to do the actual paperwork until later in, in the process. Just makes it a lot easier to track and keep track of.
Okay. If there aren't any more questions, we'll move to FY 16 budget. Do you have, Emery, do you have something on it? Okay.
Um, after your vote at the public hearing, um, I did, TMS has sort of cleaned up the budget page so that it is reflective of your actual vote. We went into the budget master and just made the appropriate adjustments to the budget as it, as it currently stands. So this represents everything having been fully incorporated into the budget detail and moving forward. So you can see at the very bottom of the page, you can see the budget that you voted. You can also see that $360,922 gap that currently exists, that we're hopeful, um, we can do some savings in transportation and apply it to that deficit, and then, um, look to the town to fund probably an additional $178,000 on top of what we might be able to save in transportation. So this reflects everything that you did, um, last week, and it's just been incorporated into the budget master, and I will post this version to, um, the district's website so that it's available for the poll.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Uh, fiscal 15 on this one, for regular, regular education, transportation shows 632.
Correct.
And 16 shows 632 as well.
Correct, because we have not made that determination yet. The bid specs are going out, and we're having them be returned in two ways, status quo, and down to two runs, because then I, you know, have yet to have that full conversation on the town side with regard to, um, you know, irremanability with us just taking transportation dollars. So I wanted, so if you remember, last week, we talked about wanting this to reflect what the true gap is.
Yep.
And however we choose to solve it on the town side, will be the way we take care of that. But that $360,922 is, is the full gap at this point between what we're projecting for expenses versus revenue.
Okay. So I know that, I think this is a good time to ask this question. I know that our school committee has been invited to the finance committee tomorrow night. About a month ago, we had the chair of the SLU board in the finance committee here, and then we had a joint meeting with the SLU board and the finance committee. We had our public hearing. Two school committee members have been meeting with the finance committee a few times. So I'm just wondering, what's the goal of tomorrow night's meeting?
Well, I think it's to have a more detailed discussion. They have invited us to their meeting.
Right.
Um, just to have a more detailed discussion about, here's where the gap stands. Just to have a more detailed discussion about, here's where the gap stands, here's what our thinking is with regard to transportation and new money that we might need, and to see where they are. I have also spoken directly with the chair of the finance committee, and I believe there is some movement on the part of the finance committee to try and help us meet this gap at this point in time, so.
So are you attending that meeting?
Yes.
And are you leading that discussion?
Along with the finance committee, sure, as they request.
What this does is, especially after the cleanup version of this, we were only able to share what the total number is and what the proposed gap is, three hundred and sixty thousand dollar plus. Anything beyond that, we did not really have anything to share.
Yeah, this is nice.
So we, yeah, we stuffed there, so, yeah.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that we're all on the same page of the goal for tomorrow night and everything else. Any other questions about FY16? Unless anyone came up with some change that they want to throw in. Okay, going on to individual reports.
You have a presentation, Mr. Chair?
Oh, I skipped that. Sorry about that.
That's okay. Quite all right.
Let me ask, do you have time to go through a presentation first, or would you like to give your report first? I don't know how late you can be here tonight. That's, I just want to make sure. Okay, we.
It might be great so that she sees the data, because we're going to try to figure out how to get this information out to students, so her input might be creative.
Yeah, that'd be great.
If she has time.
Okay, perfect. Here.
I had told Kathy that I would have two presenters with me, and I know she's been in and out of the office, so I think she forgot to mention it, but I have two colleagues here, Charlene Corza, social worker at high school, and I have Rebecca Mello here, social worker at East Meadow and West Street. They're also on the Health and Wellness Advisory Committee, which meets four times a year. I chair that committee, and it's tied into the Central School Health Services Grant. So if I may.
Thank you for coming tonight.
You're welcome, and thank you for having us.
So while David's getting me all together, because he promised me he'd be here to do that, I would just like you to note in the school committee agenda that the Youth Risk Behavior Survey is a different survey. The actual survey that we're going to look at tonight is the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey. So the Youth Risk Behavior Survey was done in 2009, and it was done sporadically. We, as a district, chose to do the Prevention Needs Assessment Survey every other year because we wanted to collaborate with SPIFI, otherwise known as the Strategic Planning Initiative for Families and Youth. So we decided, as a committee, that we would stick with one survey so that we could see trends that were occurring in our student data. What occurred before was, one year we did the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, and then three years later, we did a different survey, and then I came on seven years ago and was asked to look at the data from the superintendent that was here at the time. And I sat with Charlene for hours, and there was no real correlation. We could not compare oranges to apples. We needed to make a commitment to one survey and to stick with it. And what's nice about this survey is all of the districts in Hampshire, Hampden, Hampshire County participate. So as you'll see on our slides, Granby is compared to other students. The kids who take it are in grades eight, ten, and twelve. They took it in 2011, they took it in 2013, and I'm happy to say they took it again the beginning of April for this year. So as you can see, we're starting to build our data so that we can compare and contrast what we need here in Granby, what we're doing well, what we're not doing well. Okay, so, are you going to be my clicker? All right, thank you. So as, this is basically what I just said, because I tend to get ahead of myself, but again, this is just a survey that the collaborative is worried about youth behaviors that can endanger health and academic achievement. They're also very interested in where we scored higher with some of our risk factors, and also where we scored higher in some of our protective factors here in Granby. Just so you are aware, that there is an opt-out letter that goes home to every parent, and they can look at the survey ahead of time. Students do not have to answer all of the questions if they are uncomfortable. So that letter goes out at least a month ahead of time, giving the parents the option to look at those questions. I'm happy to say that we had nobody opt out.
Is this me? Yeah, that's you.
May I just quickly ask you a question?
Oh, sure.
It says that there's 2011, 2013, and recently, March 2015. But the first page says 2011, 2013, because we don't have the results for.
The 2015 results will come out end of June, beginning of July. And it's taken so long to get this together, because we, as a committee, kind of formed, we formed, decided what we wanted to do, which Charlene's going to go over with, but we didn't really want to put this data out there, because we wanted school committee to take a look at it clearly before we did some campaigns that we're thinking of. And the former superintendent had asked me not to do anything with the data conclusion. So we've moved on from this as a committee, but certainly you're forming our goals for next year as a committee.
Okay, so as Karen said, last year, we had two giant piles of data from 2011 and 2013 with the three different cohorts per year. And so our task as the advisory committee was, how do we distill down all this data so that we can make relative recommendations? Because, of course, we want data to drive our interventions in how we can help our kids with their risk factors. And so we asked ourselves some questions about how are we going to do this? And actually, the survey made one recommendation, and they said, you know, when you're looking at data as a school system, and it's this giant pile, the first thing you might do is you might look at how do your kids compare with other kids? And sort of note, where are your risk factors maybe higher than the risk factors among kids in Hampshire County? Where are your protective factors maybe lower than kids protective factors in other counties? So we did that. We thought that made a lot of sense. We thought that's a really good place to begin. And so as a committee, we looked at our data in a new way, but we still had substantial data. And we actually invited SPIFI to come and consult with us, to say to them, wow, we still have a lot of risk factors that.
Come on, just show them. I mean, you get this really pretty packet, and this is the upraised version. There's a packet about, I don't know, yay big, no exaggeration.
Right, yeah. And so we just wanted a place to start that was doable. And so what they suggested was, that's a really good point, what is doable? Because there are certainly risk factors that have not a lot to do with school. So we're not going to get into the minutia of the data points, but there were certain questions that were asked that had to do with habits in the family, lifestyle outside of school. So maybe relevant to how kids perform in school, but maybe not so much that we, as a school community, can do to impact those factors. So this idea of doability was a good place to start. What are, what are data points that we identified that we felt we could target and make an impact upon? And so from there, Isabelleina also suggested that maybe in the quest for doability, that we just pick three factors. She said, pick two risk factors that you've identified where our kids seem to be more risky than other kids, and pick a protective factor where we're really strong. Let's talk about something we do really well. And so we did that. And what we did was we identified three data points. One was academic failure. Our kids reported a perception that they are not performing well academically, that we thought was really high, and was in fact higher than other kids in Hampshire County. We also looked at kids' perception of risk when it comes to marijuana use. They weren't feeling very risky about that. And then we cited a protective factor, which was kids' involvement in pro-social activities at the school level. That was something that we did pretty well in. So those are the three that we identified. We broke our committee down into groups, and each of the groups took their factor and did three things with it. First, dig deep, explore your data point. So, for example, I was on the academic failure committee, which I'll talk about later. Mr. Calo, I think you joined me in that. So we wanted to look into the reality of that. Is in fact academic failure an issue? Do a lot of our kids, are a lot of our kids failing? The second point was, once you've dug deep, figure out, what are we doing as a school system already to address the problem? And then, thirdly, what are your recommendations as a subgroup on your committee? What can we be doing differently in the future? So now we're going to get into those three points and let you know what we did.
So the first graph is going to show you an overall perceived risk of drug use. The trick with this graph is that it actually combines cigarettes, alcohol, and marijuana use. So overall, that gives you sort of an idea of how risky do our kids perceive drug use to be. However, within my subgroup, we were able to look more specifically at cigarettes, alcohol, and marijuana use. So the good news is that cigarette use and alcohol use could have actually been seen more as a protective factor, because it, the numbers showed us that we're doing that well. A lot of, the majority of kids reported that cigarette use was not, they knew, they knew the risks associated with cigarette use, they knew the risks associated with regular alcohol use. Where it was more of a risk factor was around marijuana use. So it asked questions around regular marijuana use, trying marijuana, and those numbers showed us more that our kids saw less, less risk in using marijuana regularly. As our kids got older, we were able to look at eighth grade compared to tenth grade compared to twelfth grade. So as we expected, as the kids got older, their perceived risk of drug use, marijuana specifically, went down. So that led us to think about some things that we could do, or things that we are already doing. So on the next slide. Go ahead.
What are those things? The first one that says Bach Harrison, I'm assuming 2013, 2011 are from.
That's us.
That's us?
2013, 2011 is us. Hampshire County is Hampshire County, and the Bach Harrison is a national.
National norms.
National norms.
Monitoring the future, national norms.
Thank you.
Sure. So in thinking about the perception around risk of drug use, we talked a little bit in our group about what Granby currently offers. Right now, we have various drug and alcohol education into various wellness and health classes. In sixth grade, we have taught DARE for many, many years. However, this year, the Granby Police Department partnered with Charlene and myself, and we were all three trained in a life skills curriculum. We actually just started last week, so that will take the place of DARE. And up at the high school, there is a Students Against Destructive Decisions group that meets. In terms of what we can do, that was really what we wanted to think about. We have all this data. Now what? What do we do with it? How do we get the word out? We talked about providing links to resources, providing more consistent health and wellness courses and opportunities, having guest speakers or various assemblies, and getting the word out sort of within our student body of, you know, sort of this idea that marijuana isn't risky to use, so what can we do to educate them more specifically within that realm versus the alcohol and the cigarettes, which we seem to be doing well?
Okay, so almost half of our kids reported in the survey that they thought they were failing, and we know that's not true. So we thought, where does that come from? So let's look into that perception. But first, let's just double-check that it really isn't true, and it's not. In fact, I won't bore you with too many statistics, but the bottom line is that the majority of our students in grades eight, ten, and twelve, in reality, receive Cs or higher. It's like point-something percent of kids who actually get failing grades. So the perception does not meet the reality. Big shock, I know, with teenagers, right? So we thought, okay, how are we going to help ourselves understand this perception? And so what we did was we looked at related data points. So, for example, we looked at things like interest in school, commitment to school, school is relevant to me, questions like that the kids were asked. And lo and behold, we found a theme, and the theme was that a majority of our kids basically have or report a low commitment to school, don't really feel that school's so valuable or important. Again, big surprise with teenagers, right? They have other things on their minds. And so we were thinking, next slide, please. So what can we do, or what do we already do to try and get the word out that, first of all, kids are doing really well in our community and in our school? And secondly, how do we help school to feel more relevant to the kids' lives? So firstly, let's see, we think that DI is a piece of this, differentiated instruction. I don't know how much everybody in this room knows about DI, but I can tell you that our staff know a lot about it now. We've spent a lot of our professional development time this past year learning about differentiated instruction, which essentially means, I'm going to distill it down, I'm going to oversimplify it, to learning how to be an instructor in a classroom where kids learn in lots of different ways. There is not just one way to teach. The other piece is, we celebrate our kids when they do well academically. We have honor roll, and remind me, John, do we do Sundays for honor rolls still?
We do.
So kids get to come to the cafeteria at lunchtime, and if you're on the honor roll, you get a Sunday, and it's scooped by our administration, sometimes our school resource office, we have a principals' list dinner every year. I was at my first one this past year, and it was very well-attended. I had to say, there were a couple of hundred people there. I don't know if it's like that every year, but wow. So we try to celebrate when kids do well and make a, make a big deal of it, but what more could we do to make school relevant to all kids? So one thought we had was, let's do some social norming, which is a fancy way of saying, let's get the word out, let's advertise to kids how well they're doing. Let's maybe think about more student-centered classrooms. Let's think about things like dual enrollment. Some of our kids already do that, so they have classes that they take at HCC and other places. Let's think about, we used to have a school-to-career class where kids actually went out and visited job sites and did a lot of research about careers they might be interested in. We don't have that any longer. I don't know if we're going to be getting it in the future, but we think we should. And just do we more to get out of the classroom? Getting out of the classroom and into community, and if we can't do that, then how do we figure out ways to bring community in and really up that relevance factor for kids?
I have a question for you. So what we currently do, you know, for rewards, we have the honor program, and we have the principal list dinner.
Yes.
But I would say those are students that are already A B students.
I would not disagree.
And so our C students might be actually working harder than our A B students, but yet they're not getting rewarded.
At least not in these ways. That's where you come in to help us put interventions in place to help get that number greater, so that those C students get recognized.
And I would turn that around and say, this is your skill set, this is your experience. We're a school committee body, so.
It's true.
I would want recommendations and not just the problem, so.
And truth be told, Karen was very kind earlier when she said that we wanted to wait to present to you first. That's not really true. We didn't want to wait. We were, we were ready. We were ready last year. We wanted to get, we wanted to get on with it.
You're right.
But we were, we were not given that option, so.
Budget kind of took over.
It happens, it happens, so.
Right, that's our task and our job, to get this figured out.
And we have ideas.
So I'm definitely looking forward to hearing, because I have a feeling that a student receiving an A or B across the board is probably saying, or probably, I would guess, would not be saying they're failing. I would think the students that are probably saying that there's a good chance of failing are the ones in the D C range. I could be totally wrong, this is not my field, but I would think that we want to encourage some positive movement. And if we're only rewarding our top students, I do see that as a problem.
Right, and a top student is going to do well, for the most part, in pretty much any classroom situation, which is why we need to figure out, how do we change that up? Right? So we can meet the needs and make school relevant for all those kids. Right? Thank you.
So should we assume then that your data was telling you that relevance of school was a primary factor in students' feeling of failure?
That is, that's the conclusion we drew.
Okay. I'm just, you know, the first time you actually mentioned it, I was thinking whether or not the definition of failure was different in our school system. Maybe for whatever reason, students came to. Maybe for whatever reason, students came to think that C is the lowest I should go, and I should not go lower, or whatever that thing is. And then they're holding themselves accountable. Was there any, anything that indicated that? Or is it simply making the school a more welcoming, relevant place for students?
Well, the, when we, when we shared this data point with Spiffy, they said, yeah, you're higher than Hampshire County, but you're not that much higher. And it was their take that there is a piece of this that is very much about adolescent development. And again, that perception-reality thing, so feeling versus reality. I don't think we had discussion about.
We did not.
Is a, is a perception of failure linked to having a C or lower? That's an interesting question, though.
So just to dovetail off of Mike's comment, that, that's why we're here. We're showing you the research we've done, and we're hoping to do interventions that we as a committee feel are relevant to our students. So that in 2017, we'll start to watch the data, and hopefully, our risk factors will become protective factors eventually. But, so I'm always the gloom and doom, I'm the H1N1 girl, I'm the wellness policy girl. So I took the pro-social involvement, which is a proactive piece, our proactive factor, protective factor, that we looked at. And I think this, no offense, ladies, because marijuana is important too, but I think this is perhaps one of the most important things that we need to get across in the near future because our enrollment is declining. We're losing kids. Why are we losing kids? For many, many different reasons. However, if you notice, now again, this slide is a whole bunch of pro-social involvement, but I just wanted to read you three very interesting facts. Our students, 44 to 45.5%, so almost half of our students in grades, excuse me, eight, 10, and 12, answered yes to lots of, having lots of chances on choosing class activities, which I think is huge. Almost half of our student body in grades eight, 10, and 12. 82.6 to 93.8% of our students answered yes to so many chances to get involved in the school setting. Now I bet you if we asked parents in this community what the percentage is, they would say, oh, kids have nothing to do there. But it's interesting that our students in that range have said that. And lastly, 70 to 80%, 86% of our students across grades answered yes to his or her teacher notices when I do a good job. And that's not just your A and B students. If you've got 70 to 86% of your, your eight, 10, and 12, we're doing something right here. So that leads me, I'm going to skip around for a minute. If you could click one more, and then I'll go back to this, I apologize. That leads me to our next steps, which we as a committee are ready to do. We'd really like to have a community information night. I know that sometimes it's not well-attended, but certainly, it would be on my website under, under the nursing staff. You know, maybe we take 15 minutes of a staff meeting and let our staff know what their kids are saying in eighth, 10th, and 12th grade. You know, it'd be great for the staff to realize what these students are thinking, especially with academic failure or chances to get involved. And then this perhaps is the biggest piece that I would like to point out to you, is that we've talked about doing a social norms campaign for about two years because our enrollment has been declining. But I think now more than ever, we need to get the word out of, did you know that 80, 70 to 80% of our students in grades eight, 10, and 12 think that there are a lot of chances to get involved? That may draw more kids to our district, because a lot of times you hear in this community, oh, there's not a lot to do, there's no class activities there, no this. So I think data is what we want to drive, drive this force, and my committee is ready to do that. So now if you could just back up once. Thank you. So we just listed, you know, some of the things that we have. We have a whole bunch of groups. Hope, helping out people everywhere, Students Against Destructive Drug Decisions. We have a book club, we have the Gay-Straight Alliance. At East Meadow, we have monthly character traits. Ms. Champagne has a fishing rod and fish, and when you're caught being good, there's compliments on the board that teachers notice, staff notice, kids notice about other kids, which I think is huge to start showing the community. And at West Street, we do See It, Say It, Change It with Rebecca about bullying. It ties in with our bullying curriculum. We do whole-body listening, we do fill a bucket, and we do Mix It Up Day, so that kids sit with other kids. Those are things that we do that I'm not sure the community knows we do on a, on a daily basis. So one of the things we were thinking of is to really, you know, continue with this pro-social activity, increasing the communication. I know when I send stuff home, they go, oh yeah, what illness is out now? Oh, head lice, yeah, I'll be sure to call. It could be something, you know, we could flip it. It could be something positive coming from the nursing staff, something data-driven. Increase our amount of time, maybe, that teachers write comments on report cards. That may coincide with our perception of academic failure. And maybe looking at a certificate of to be handed out when doing well. Maybe that, that certificate of something may not mean, mean so much to an A student who's used to it, but that C student that's really working hard and to the best of their ability, just kind of more recognizing that. But I really want to just end with, the committee is, we're ready, we've been ready for months. And with your blessing and your input, we'd really like to hop on this Did You Know campaign, not only for our risk factors and our protective factors, but also to show the community at large what Granby does and hopefully attract more students to our community and district.
Karen, I might be confusing things.
No, maybe I am.
Let me just try to understand. I think the initial problem statement was that a large percentage of our students were thinking that they were failing.
Yep.
So the campaign that you are referring to is a campaign that addresses the community, right? So, "Did you know that these nice things are happening in our school system?"
Yep.
Are, are we then saying that through that campaign, we're going to be able to also get to our students and let them know that we?
Absolutely.
Think they are success stories, they are not failures, and they're, you know, they should be proud of themselves? If that's the case, is there a more direct way of doing that? I see a couple of examples that you have there. And just not to lose my train of thought on that one. Many of these surveys, they just kind of narrow down a theme, and we ask, is it this? Is it this? Is it that? Is there anything in this survey or anything else that you are sharing with the students that allow them to tell you what they think they are thinking? Not, you know, boxed in student, questions, but this is why I think this way. This is why I think I'm failing. This is why I think I'm not part of the school system. This is why I think I don't really socialize well at school. Do we have anything like that?
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but when the committees were broke up into groups, we kind of, I know that you asked some students, you made that part of your research.
I was going to say, certainly that's a piece of the clinical work that we do with kids. Do we have a systemic approach of doing that for all kids? I don't know.
Yeah.
That's something to maybe look at. Maybe they could become a guidance piece, something that we ask all kids. I think when there are problems, those questions get asked. I think when certain things are identified, we go that road, but.
I think it's important, I, I've actually had, because obviously, my son's 18. He would have been graduating this year, so his friends are seniors. And I've heard two of them in the past weeks say to me, their conversation led me to believe that maybe they were going to pass. And I'm like, what are you talking about? You're going to pass, right? You're going to graduate. Yeah, but if I get a, if I even get a C in my family, that's not, I might as well be failing. So that could be part of it. It's, it's a perception.
Yeah, I think, you know, with most data, there's lots of contributing factors, contributing factors, right?
And are these surveys anonymous?
They are, absolutely.
Yep. And I think our hope, our hope is for a multi-campaign approach. Not just like one campaign, but like maybe different kinds of campaigns in different places. Some community-based, like North Hampton does a lot of community-based. You'll see billboards if you go to North Hampton, much about, "Did you know that most parents in North Hampton call their kids friends to make sure they're where they're supposed to be?" So we could do something like that, but we can also do school-based campaigns. There's classroom-based campaigns. I think we should be really creative.
Yes.
And the only other piece I wanted to add without going too long is when we do present the data to our staff and to our kids and to our community, this might be an obvious point, but just in case, we'll present more than just these three. We have a lot of data, and, and a lot of it is worth sharing.
Seems like it would be really instructive and helpful for the staff, for teachers. Now, I know that there's so much pressure on teachers as it is, but they're, you know, they're on the front lines, they're with the students six hours a day.
That's right.
So a lot of times, they see students more than a parent does during the week.
And they have a lot of valuable, valuable insight as well.
The other piece about making sure there's information on report cards. I mean, I know as a parent, I use that information. If I see a grade and then I see a corresponding comment, I go right for the comment if it's negative comment.
Yeah.
For the record.
So I think the comments are valuable, right?
And we can sit here until we're blue in the face, but until we engage. And just so you're aware, we do put the invitation out to staff. Granted, it's one more committee. I try to hype it up that it's only four times a year. We do have several staff at West Street. But again, absolutely, I think, you know, we're MCAS-driven, we're this, but I, I think the piece needs to come back to if we're not socially and emotionally stable and we're not able and willing and ready to learn.
So it seems like it needs to be an ongoing conversation, which is what I was going for with this. And not, not presented to the teachers once or twice, or even three times a year, but an ongoing discussion so that it really, you know.
Part of that Do You Know campaign should be toward the teachers as well.
I really think that, you know, some of those numbers that I think you gave Karen were about, you know, 70 to 80% of the students think that the teachers are engaged and they're challenged or whatever. To me, just by having that information, kudos should go to the staff with that. You know, like thank you card, electronic email, going out and say, you know, this is what, is what came back from the survey. Kudos to all of you.
And we haven't done that. And we haven't done that.
Right. And I'm just saying, little things like that sometimes can go a long way. It's just not rewarding our students with a certificate or whatever. It's also reaching out to our staff and letting them know what they do every day.
Matters.
Does matter.
Absolutely.
And it showed up on this, you know, survey.
Especially this week, there are teacher appreciation weeks.
I bet sure is.
Time to do it.
And so on the meetings, Karen, and trying to do the community meetings and what's, you know, what we're doing right in our school systems and everything else, I would just ask that you work very closely with Dr. Booth, because I know she's starting that campaign too, and with her blog and everything else. I think that they should all be networked together somehow.
Perfect timing.
That's why you're on the strategic meeting.
That's why I'm on the strategic meeting, I'm told. We'll get there. We'll get there. Yeah, I guess so. I thank you for your time. If you'd like any other further information, if you go home and, you know, because I know you're going to think about this, and you have any questions, don't hesitate to email me. And if you'd like any further data, I'm hoping that the 2015 numbers give us even more data to track, and we're going to move forward with some interventions.
And even, you know, this currently what Granby does, to me, that still seems like a subset. You know, we have after-school programs, we have sports programs.
Absolutely. And that wasn't everything. Absolutely. It was to get the, we could, if you really wanted, we could be here for hours, and we could tell you all the stuff we looked at. But it's kind of really summarized for you. We do, we do much more than that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for your interview.
So when do you expect the 2015 data to be delivered?
I usually get it, the past two times I've gotten it, the end of June. And then I meet with the superintendent in July just to quickly look it over. And then I invite a member from the collaborative out to my first health and wellness advisory meeting, which is usually the end of September. And I invite them to come out and take this huge pile of data and kind of summarize it for us. So by the end of September, I should have the collaborative or representative out. But certainly, we will move forward with the information we have now, you know, starting, starting now. Because we, I purposely planned our last meeting for the year at the end of May after the presentation here so that we could really discuss with, with the interventions to move forward.
So when you have that, please come back. I think this was very, thank you all very much. This was very informative.
Appreciate that feedback. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to informational correspondence, Annabelle, do you have a report for us?
Yeah.
Excellent.
Coming, May 14th, the main concert is at 6:15, and the speaking that's Sunday. And then this week is teacher appreciation, which I just mentioned. And we can finalize all the details for that at the district council meeting on Friday. And so the teachers are allowed to dress down all week, and, oh, there's coffee, and it's in the library, so I'll be free.
Excellent. Very nice. Okay. Any questions for Annabelle? And we'll move on to the high school. Jonathan?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on Jonathan's report? I have to jump ahead in here.
We have to rewire for your report now. Do you have a survey or anything?
Okay. Any questions? If not, I'll move on to East Meadow.
John, do you want to mention about Friday?
Yeah, being the, celebrating our, our acceptances, our senior students.
Sure, absolutely.
It was actually Dr. Booth's idea. She came to me maybe a couple of weeks ago. It was a literature that the First Lady has promoted around celebrating colleges, college and university acceptances at your school. And May 1st, being National Accept Day, they're sort of mimicking what they do in athletics on a college level to bring it down to the high school level and showcasing where senior students have been accepted, where they're actually going to enroll in September. So what we decided to do is start small because it was, we had very limited time. And they have many, many options. We like to expand, you know, eventually, in years to come. But what we've asked our, our senior students to do is really wear some type of apparel that showcases where they're going to be enrolling come September. And we've also emailed our staff to do the same thing. And I was really thinking about it, you know, eventually, we could ask all our students at the junior, senior high school, because there's some type of, you know, as I'm thinking about you, Annabelle, you know, with your brother and others, family members, you know, really giving a heightened awareness to colleges and universities, really, what it means for further education for our students.
So I have a question.
Yes.
I really like the idea. It's, it's great. But especially after the presentation that we saw, do we have anything for any student that might not have received an acceptance or they did not get where they wanted to, so that they don't feel like they're left out of this whole process? They just, you know, they, they become part of the celebration regardless of what happened? Do we have anything like that for them?
Or whatever college they are choosing to go to. Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, if they're not going to, if they're not going anywhere, or they want to go somewhere and they did not get an acceptance, is this going to cause some, some divide among all those students that, you know, some are fortunate enough to go somewhere, some are not?
Quite honestly, I really, you know, didn't think that. You know, for the most part, we have, I think, something like, you know, 94, 95% of our students are thinking two or four-year schools, even though they may not be going to two- or four-year schools. Some of them might be going to work right after graduation. But I think that, you know, everyone that I'm talking, everyone that I've talked to really has some type of schooling, whether it's some type of vocational, two, four, two- or four-year college. You know, I hear and now quite, quite a bit from our kids who I would never have thought about, this Lincoln, Lincoln Institute that provides training, you know, for students that want to go into some type of, you know, vocation. So all our students are really having some type of idea around further schooling. It may not be right after they, you know, graduate from high school, but it's definitely, you know, in their thoughts. You know, with regards to the question that you asked, I, you know, to be quite honest with you, I don't, I don't know where.
Typically, I don't behave like Eeyore, but I thought, you know, this was the Eeyore question. But as I said, I really like the idea, because it might have the positive impact of encouraging everyone else actually to be part of it in the future.
And I think that's what the First Lady was intending through the initiative, is to really showcase, A, the importance of going on to college or some sort of advanced training beyond high school, and to give kids an opportunity to aspire to that, so.
So I just have a follow-up question on that. So, but it's being touted as Acceptance Day or whatever, and wear your school colors, right? So what about those students that weren't accepted? I just want to follow up on Emery. Do they know they can still wear? Do they know they can still wear school colors of the college they might want to go to in three years or four years or even in September? Or is it, you know, I guess, does the senior class, do all the members of the senior class know that they can wear college colors and not just colleges?
Or if they're going into the military, wear military colors or whatever, yeah.
We can definitely communicate that.
So, I don't know if it was communicated or not, so that's what I'm asking.
I mean, it's, we definitely will, I say that. We're sending emails out to parents, and I saw your press release that you sent out today. So, it's just something, you know, and some of the ideas that the First Lady, you know, brought up is that you can have assemblies, you can, you know, call kids and have some type of big, you know, hurrah for that in terms of in front of the student body. But like I said, we thought we'd start small by, you know, at least wearing, you know, either school colors or some type of apparel where these students are thinking of going or where they're actually going.
I'm thrilled with both of them too, that list of kids who are already been accepted.
Absolutely. We're both in board, and we have some, to be honest with you, I don't want to go off, but we've had some terrific college acceptances this past year, which normally you're aware of. It's really impressive, you know, talking to students, UMass, Eisenberg School of Management, to Amherst College, I mean, it's really, really impressive. Western England University, talking to one student today who's going for criminal justice and really excited about, it's just great to see, you know, hear kids talking about their careers, you know, really thinking about what they want to do after four years of college.
Excellent. It's a great idea.
Yeah, thank you for that.
Any other questions for Jonathan? If not, I'll move on to East Meadow for Jen. Did MCAS go well?
Yeah, well, we're starting our next round in the next couple of weeks, but the year I always started, we're starting it on the math and the science.
It's fun to box mountains on a bag, isn't it?
I was very relieved, yes, as I could breathe aside. And then like two weeks later, a new box is there.
Actually, on that one, it's not related, and I didn't know whether it's the right time to ask, but we're still doing MCAS because last year, we said we're not going to do Park and we're just going to stick to MCAS. Is there a time limit to how long we can actually continue with MCAS? Is this MCAS for now?
The current version of the MCAS, as I understand it, will sunset in 2017. So, the state will migrate to something else, whether it's Park or some other thing. I don't know.
They're planning a decision in the fall at one of the Board of Education meetings to make a decision, keeping the MCAS graduation requirement for a while though. So, the 10th grade MCAS will be with us for a bit.
There's actually been a lot in the newspaper lately around Park.
Yeah. Oh, there's a lot of opposition to what they're going to do.
Enough of that.
Good work on the East Meadow Open House.
Yeah, it was a lot of fun. And, yeah, I was, I was really excited. We had a lot of people working on it. We actually had a parent, a third grade parent, actually, not even a parent from East Meadow, that helped us put together the slideshow. And Mr. Kearns from the high school actually had some students from his computer class help to scan them in because I had some hard copies of pictures. And so, it was really a community effort. And, yeah, it was a very well-attended event, so.
West Street, Deb. Any questions?
The sinkhole.
It's fixed. You saw it the other night.
Yeah.
So, we didn't lose any vehicles or anything like that? That's not how it got filled in.
It's all good.
I think you were saying that it's a temporary fix?
It is temporary because we're due to remove those oil tanks. And that will have to be redug. So, they just, they dug it out and filled it in and then paved it over so it's safe. But it's going to have to be redone again, so.
Okay. When are those oil tanks going to be removed?
They were supposed to be done, I believe, last summer, but I don't know why.
Yeah, because it did get...
That's evidently in the hands of the town administrators, I understand.
Okay. Because that's, we did get that approved on town floor. And so, usually, if things sit longer than a year or so, people get upset that we actually approved, the town approved spending, and it's not happening.
Okay.
I have a general question, and again, not necessarily related to this, but I was thinking the other day. We have the orientations for students that are going, moving on to a new school. Is there anything like, or might already have it, is there a program where students actually physically go to those schools and partake in classes?
Scavenging Day, third grade to fourth grade, June, I don't have to read my calendar, but it's in June. And the kids come in with their parents. Actually, the social worker Rebecca Mello helps me out that day, and she comes and they do a scavenger hunt through the building and they get to know the building a little bit, and we have a little presentation for them at the beginning. And then there's sixth to seventh grade, I think it's like May 21st, where they go, come over here, you know, with their parents.
Thank you.
And then we have the orientation.
The fall, for school services as well.
Okay.
The end is coming.
Moving on to Dr. Jefferson. I actually do have a question, but it's not on your report.
Okay.
And I'm going to give the question to you and Dr. Hool. I know a few weeks ago, there was a question about school choice students coming into town that are, that turn out to be specialized students. Do we have a member on that?
I don't, off the top of my head.
I, I've been actually working on a fairly detailed state report because one of the things that we do is David pulls together a list of all the choice students, and then we have coded any students who receive, who are special needs students. I enter detailed information on each of them into a state report, and we get reimbursement based on that. The percentage is actually slightly lower than, you know, the state average. So, I think it was around sixteen percent, fifteen, sixteen percent. I'm thinking, I don't, I don't have the exact number, but I did notice that it wasn't a high percentage of students. Range of needs, so I don't know that it's dramatically different than the cross-section of Granby students who are attending. So, just, I know the question has come up in the past. We do get reimbursement if they require additional services, and it seems to be a fairly representative slice of life, although that's without analyzing, you know, grades or levels of courses that just qualify for special services.
So, by knowing the number of school choice students, which I believe is roughly one-hundred-and-thirty-five, so you're guessing around twenty, twenty students if we had to do a rough estimate? We're looking at six?
Twenty of them that are receiving special education services?
Yes.
It might even be a little bit less than that.
Yeah. Nineteen is sticking out. It's actually on my computer as we speak.
Okay, so, right in that ballpark there. Okay.
And I just, you know, it's probably worth highlighting in case people aren't aware, we do offer a summer school program. The statutes really call for the student team to make a determination on whether or not a child would experience significant regression if they didn't have support over the course of the summer, assuming that all children slip back a little bit. But if the team feels that it would be significant, we're required and actually glad to provide, you know, summer services. It's a, for many students, it's a four-week program. For some of the kids in the ABA program, it might be a six-week program. It's not five days a week, it's not the same, you know, length of day, but it's, it's a very good opportunity for kids to stay on track. And I think the feeling I've tried to communicate to the staff is, they're on the side of inclusion. You know, my belief is I'd rather have a child come to summer school even though, you know, maybe they didn't, you know, highly qualified for it because we find that so many of our kids, you know, benefit from every little thing that we can give them for that.
I was actually asked, and I did not have the answer to this, and I asked them to call central office, but if a student is outside of Granby and Granby is offering summer school for reading at an elementary school level, can the parent pay for that child to come to the, to the summer program for reading?
I don't think we've had that in the past.
Not that I'm aware of.
Pardon?
I said, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah. So, and I've not had any requests for that, but, you know, because I, I would say that most of our summer programs are maintenance.
Yeah.
You know, so it's not, we don't offer, say, an intensive six-week crash course in the Orton-Gillingham method that's going to, you know, bump you up two grades. It's really, you know, the intense program will be what we have during the course of the school year. The summer's really more to keep traction going and help folks move along.
Okay. Any other question?
We're glad to consider things. People have, anything that will help the budget up, we'll take a shot.
Yeah, I'm wondering, you know, that's something we should look into. David, do you have anything, or other than we got more equipment?
Yeah, it's, and hopefully, I'm expecting at least a couple more trips before the, before the beginning of summer because I want to, you know, we're actually in pretty good shape. You know, all of our classrooms and computer labs have all been done within the last few years. You know, some schools are pushing seven-plus years on equipment, so we have a pretty good turnover. But I still like to do something every summer, so I'm going to be getting some more stuff. And just one comment, Jen was talking about the nice job a particular class did here, helping her set up. That teacher had come to me when Jen approached him and says, this is great, I want to do this, but I don't have a scanner in my room. So, I called one of my friends up, and he sent over not just a scanner, but a brand-new scanner, free of charge, still sealed up in the box. So, so...
Keep calling your friends.
So, that, that was much appreciated, obviously, by everybody. So, and I just, I put some detail here in the state reports. I know it's a dull subject, but it's an important subject because that's what determines our, our revenue. It also determines grant eligibility and also provides information to the state and the federal government on how they measure us in terms of our performance and our ranking and stuff like that. So, I put that information in here. The other piece I want to share with you on that is that every year, the amount of time, and last year particularly, the amount of money that we have to spend on software to comply and do these reports goes up every year. They demand a lot of us. Dr. Hool and I had a brief discussion this morning that, you know, when this thing started many, many years ago in the late 1990s, it was a little, it was something that was kind of done in isolation, it was a very brief period of time. This is an ongoing thing. And right now, to try to be a little proactive and to try to minimize the pain, I'm, I've actually volunteered to be a test site for some of these new reports moving forward. And what that does, that gives us individualized attention with the software developers. So, rather than, you know, me having to run around and get trained and try to piece things together, you know, I have the software developers reaching out to us. And, and I think, I've been doing that probably for about two years now. It does have a benefit. But like I said, it's, I know it's not an interesting subject, but it is a very important one.
Thank you.
A quick question. The, I know that we make several updates to our school student data. What is the last update? Or when is the last update?
The last snapshot, you mean, taken by the state?
Last snapshot?
The last snapshot, actually, that's a very, that's a very good question. The last snapshot is taken the, the last day's, well, it's taken based on data as of the last day of school. So, like at the high school level, the student grades that are in the system, you know, a picture's taken, if I can use that term, and sent to the state. It actually doesn't fully get complete and certified probably until, I'm guessing, late July, early August because there is an enormous amount of validations that have to be done. There are probably around, for this district, there are probably around eighty thousand pieces of data that I will be sending. And when I, if I were to print out the summary reports for this district, it'd probably be four hundred pages or something of data. So, that's, it's very, very, it's my, it's my summer recreation is a significant part of it, is doing reports.
David, since you do all that, just, you would know, what's the, what's the student population right now in the district, K-12?
I have that folder in my office. It's a little shy of nine hundred, but I don't have that exact number.
It's eight, eighty-something.
I do have, I do have the certified number on file, obviously, with all the other reports.
We can bring that back to you.
That was taken as of March first.
It's just come out a few times, if people ask us, we should know how many kids we have.
We'll bring that back to you the next week.
We'll bring that to you the next week.
About eighty, eighty, okay. I knew it was under nine hundred, so.
Okay. Emery, Collaborative, any update?
No.
And thank you, David.
We're going to have a meeting this month in Ohio.
Okay. Moving on, West Street Building City, Jim or Emery?
We can both talk about it, or we can talk about it. Jim's always there with us. We had a meeting last week, and we basically, committed almost by, almost unanimously, we pretty much decided that the way we want our architect to go towards preferred schematic report to MSBA is to go with the addition renovation to the new school in front of East Meadow and renovate East Meadow School. So, we have a meeting next Wednesday, and we have one following Thursday, the 21st, so that, the goal is that they will be able to meet the deadline of June 11th to get the preferred schematic report submission to MSBA.
So, Jim, you say it was almost unanimous. So, what were the reasons for the holdout?
There are a couple people who still felt the cheaper cost of just building a new pre-K at West Street was still the way to go. But I think they'll be on board with us. It's just, they've got to move forward with something, that's what the majority wants to do.
Okay, so we're down to that one model at this point?
Right now, yes.
How many members on that committee?
Thirteen.
Over thirteen.
Yeah, something like that. So, out of the thirteen, there were only a couple that weren't in agreement?
Were they representative of any committee in town?
They were. It was John and Mark, but I think...
So, the select board and the finance committee?
Yeah, but the thing is...
Basically, Emery, they just sort of, the vote was one or the other, and that's the one they preferred. So, it's not that they are against the addition renovation of East Meadow.
They made sure that they added, that they, you know, once the vote is done, they were fine with the decision of the overall committee. And in fact, they could have gone either way. But there were, the factors for them weighed in favor of what we called Option Six, which was only a West Street school in front, in front of East Meadow. Option Five, which was selected, has that new school, but also it renovates East Meadow.
Are they attached?
They're attached, yeah.
Okay, so...
Lightly attached. But, like, exactly, lightly attached.
Well, there are two connecting corridors.
So, East Meadow needs to be brought up to code. Okay, so, it'll have a sprinkler system or whatever the code is required.
Berkshire Design Group, which is the environmental group that has been working with the architects to get ready for the preferred schematic report, have been on-site today and will be on-site this week to do a site survey. So, they've been, you know, figuring out the dimensions, et cetera. That will happen. Well, there will also be some, a little bit of destructive work to see what lies in behind some of the walls and look at the foundation and things like that, which will also be repaired once that work is done. But they're going to do some test pilot holes to see if there is something that they're going to potentially run into in terms of trying to figure out the actual bottom line. Right now, the bottom line in terms of the town is about fifteen point five million. But, you know, obviously, as we get closer to submission to MSBA, we need to tighten those numbers up.
And how, you know, that, I'll call it research, how detailed will it be? Will they be checking the caulking around the windows to see if there's any lead in it? You know, how far do they go other than construction, I guess?
They're going to look for asbestos, they're going to look for any of those kinds of things that might have been included in the building materials in the government at age to see.
Fifty years, so.
Yeah. So, hazardous materials can actually jack up the costs, so they're going to be particularly looking for that. For now, they're thinking that we should be okay for the most part, but they're going to be looking at that. And the other advantage of this particular project was it allowed the architects to kind of leverage some of the existing rooms. So, instead of having two separate structures that had to have their own cafeteria, their own media room, their own gym, now we're able to, through those very narrow connections, we're able to leverage whatever exists in one school and then just build something that is new in the new structure. So, there were some... So there were some economies of scale that were realized. Obviously, regardless of how you look at it, it's, you know, taking care of two buildings, so the cost is higher than the other standalone West Street school. I think that was about $2 million cheaper?
Yeah.
Yeah, because part of the cost for West Street would have been to have to spend about a million dollars on renting a modular.
Yeah. And also to, since we're going over these details, when you do renovation, your chances are of getting higher percentage of reimbursement increase, because the state actually is willing to pay more for renovation projects at this point, if they're attached to some, you know, construction, approved construction project. And we're taking advantage of that as well. So what we're looking at right now, as far as the cost, it is based on our base reimbursement percentage, based on some allowance that there might be some, some things that we might encounter, might find, as they are doing the destructive analysis of East Meadow. So there is some possibility, I don't want to speak on behalf of the engineers and the architects and sound too hopeful, but there is possibly that the cost may come down, and the reimbursement may go up, as we tightened the numbers, as Judy was saying.
Right. Because MSBA does value the ability to rehab current construction where possible.
Yeah, yeah, seems like we're in the same situation we were in with the high school in some ways, of shared space and all that stuff, so that's, that's good. About the asbestos, though, and Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, or maybe Jen, you're aware of this too, but it might be West Street, so I might be confused, but I thought we covered some of those tiles and everything with carpeting, because we felt there were asbestos in the tiles.
Most of the hallways were covered with carpet. Cafeteria and beginning hallway was done over years ago.
So do we know that there is asbestos, then?
Probably assumed.
Based on the age of the building?
I actually used to, I actually was involved back in the early years, although I was a business manager on some projects for encapsulating asbestos at East Meadow, and we did encapsulate asbestos, not remove it, but we encapsulated it.
Yeah, so that's...
In a boiler room, particularly.
I guess my point is, it's not going to be a surprise then.
Absolutely, yeah.
Any other questions or discussion around that? If not, I'll go to the shared services working group.
There has been a working group that has been formed around shared services, that includes the town administrator, myself, a couple of members of the school committee, and the chair of the Board of Selectmen. We're engaging, we're getting ready to engage in some preliminary conversations around shared services, because we can't have a full discussion of that until annual town meeting. There's going to be an article on the town meeting warrant that will allow us to enter into a discussion around shared services. We have to actually make a state, an exception to state law in order to be able to do that, and it has to be done by a town meeting vote. So hopefully, that will pass, and then we can certainly get into that discussion more in earnest. But the next meeting of that group will be on May 13th at 5:30, and we're going to meet at East Meadow School, because the building committee is going to be right after that. And we've decided to change the venue, since that's the space we're now talking about.
Excellent. And when is that article going to be on?
On the annual town meeting warrant, so I assume May meeting.
The May one?
Yeah.
Who's on that working group?
Myself, Mr. Martin, Mr. Bale, and Mr. Petersen, and Mr. Trevor.
Any questions on that? And who's presenting the article? Is it being presented by Chris Martin, Select Board?
I think the Select Board is presenting. Yeah, because it's requesting a waiver to a clause of the MGL.
Okay. Okay. Some informational correspondence, Memorial Day Parade, we've been invited to march again on May 25th at 8:30 a.m. We did get an email about graduation. Thank you, Jonathan, that's June 6th at 11:00 a.m. We're to meet here at 10:30 in the library, Media Center. And on that, there was a question about caps and gowns. So if you're going to go to graduation, whether you'd be wearing a cap and gown, or whatever. So last year, I know there was some discussion from school committee members, that they prefer the school committee not wearing caps and gowns. It's been past several years now that we wore cap and gown, really just the gowns. So what does this...
I can leave the tam and holmes. Excellent. Considering it's velvet.
Unless you're a doctor.
Oh, thanks. What a guy.
So what does the school committee want to do? Do they prefer to wear the gown? That's been tradition for how long now, Jonathan?
Some time.
Yeah, I can't, I don't even know what has ever been the...
Either way, whatever.
I don't have a preference either way.
Okay.
I know it's hot in those things.
Oh, but it's cooler for guys, though, because we don't have to wear a sport coat.
I'm not a guy.
But you don't have to wear like, fancy outfit, because you're covered.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, gowns will be, get back to Jonathan. I think that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, I already did.
Wow.
Me, too.
The next one is, next school committee meeting, it'll be the Monday after graduation, June 8th, 6:00 p.m.
Are we doing anything with the after-school program, instead of the package?
No, I think that was just...
Information.
Information, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have an executive session tonight. So to move into executive session pursuant to Master General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21, A23, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel, interim superintendent and director of maintenance, and to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. As such, discussion in open meeting may have, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body. The committee will not be returning to regular session. I'm smiling here, because as soon as they start reading it, they all get relieved.
Get a head start.
Didn't mean to scare you off.
I listen.
Okay. Roll call.
Emily Irvin, aye.
Deanne Payne-McCosby, aye.
Jim Peters, aye.
Mike Wessner, aye.